Welcome back to Funding Friday. Happy New Year. It's the first episode of 2023. So for those of you who've taken a little break, welcome back. And we, as you probably know, the, the purpose of the podcast is to connect you with grant funding providers across the region. So part of my role as the Regional Enterprise Manager, Ecosystem Manager at NatWest Enterprise, covering the East of England and the Midlands, is to help you as small business owners to navigate the complex landscape of business support, signpost some of our phenomenal stakeholders, and connect you with experts and people that have got stuff that's going to help you on your journey. And today is a great example of that. So I am joined on my virtual sofa today by Sim Lee, who is a Business Growth Advisor at Warwickshire County Council. Welcome.
Hi Debbie, thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming on. So tell us a little bit about your role and what you do at the council.
Yeah, so I'm one of three growth advisors at Warwickshire County Council. And we are primarily the outward facing team at the council that interact with businesses. So the growth advisor role, it takes on a whole host of different areas. But the majority of the stuff that we do is mainly focused around delivering a European funded support programme, which is focused around access to finance and delivering the various grant programmes that we've got as well. So that takes up most of the day, but we get every, we, any business that contacts the local authority comes to us. So it is, as you might expect, as random as, random as anything, but yeah, grants and finance is the main, main part of our job.
Brilliant. And we will have listeners from across the patch who are not directly aligned to Warwickshire. Would, would the type of, oh, what's going on with my teeth today? The type of advice that you're giving us, will that kind of transcend the whole region? Do people just contact their council?
Yeah, so in most cases, people would go straight to their growth hub. They act, they usually act as the kind of signposting service for the, everything in that area. And most places in the UK have them. But yeah, any, most councils will have similar funds available, because the money kind of trickles down into the different lap areas. And then what it's like on the ground, if you look at what we've got here at Coventry and Warwickshire, if you go up north or down south, there'll be a similar, there'll be a similar type of funds, just with maybe a slight different nuance, different intervention rate, different grant level. Or some of them might spend it already, whereas some other programmes, with the European ones, that they're, they're still going actually, which is quite surprising.
Yeah, surely that money's nearly run out.
Yeah. So yeah, the last, because they went in three year contracts, so the, the very last of the money is probably going to finish, I think in June this year, end of June, but that has to be spent. So grants have to be agreed before that, they have to go do their project and then claim back the money. So we're at this point now where European money's kind of finishing, UK money is kind of still coming in, but where that's going to go or what it looks like, we don't know yet. So it's a really interesting time really.
Yeah, grab it while you can. Let's spend it and not give it back. I know that when I was in business, I had absolutely no idea that the council could help me with things like this. Is it Economic Development Team? Is it Business Rates Team? Who do they contact?
Yeah, so depending on the type, I mean, we, we're a county council, so we've got, it's a two tier system. So we've got district and borough councils under us, and we sit alongside them. And in most councils, there is some sort of economic development team. They might have, some of the smaller councils might have just one officer who interacts with businesses. We're luckily enough that we've got a bigger team that we can focus on different areas. But yeah, there'll always be some point of contact in, in the local authority. And if not, Google the closest place to you, growth hub, and you'll be able to find something and talk to somebody about it.
Yeah, if you, I think if you search growth hubs in my area, it then gives you a map and you can select them. So that's great advice. Thank you. And so let's try and get that money out of the door for Warwickshire specifically. Talk to us a little bit about the types of funding that you can provide or that you've got active at the moment.
Yeah, so at the minute, we've, there's three main funds that we've got live. And the good thing about those is they're actually not European funded, they're local authority funded, which is really good because we can be more flexible. With the European funds, it was, it was really hard for smaller businesses, especially in the B to C sector, because they pretty much excluded them. But because it's our own money, we get to spend it how, how we want, which is, gives us more flexibility. So we can help pretty much any sector. So we had one really exciting fund that launched last week. Now, we realised over the last few years that there's a bit of a gap in funding for digital creative companies who don't necessarily want to go out and buy a CNC machine or physical tangible stuff. They've got a digital product. And there's a lot of businesses where they're going through a bit of a pinch point in the development of their products, whether it's a, whether it's a payment platform, different app, software, something like that.
Yep.
And they've got longer term visions to scale up, maybe raise investments, raise, you know, serious private sector finance. But in the short term, there's a bit of a pinch point. So we've launched a grant called the Digital Creative Co-Investment Fund. And that is aimed at businesses in that sector, which there are a lot, especially around the kind of Leamington area with game studios and app developers, there's a lot of businesses around there. And they were often a bit left out of the other funding. So we've got this fund now, and it's for businesses that have a really good product, that they've got to MVP, they've got a prototype. And they've got a clear, they've maybe got their pitch deck already done, they really want to raise finance later down the line. But they need to kind of get it polished or get it finished. And it's funding there to help with those businesses that have got product, projects ready to go. That's really going to unlock growth in the future. So what we want to see is the usual things like growth in revenue, growth in jobs, but that real ambition to raise serious finance later down the line. And I think this is a stepping stone grant. Like, in the far future, what we'd love to see is councils actually investing in businesses equity to make a return on investment. But because local authorities are inherently risk averse, it's very, very hard to convince them to, to start doing that. And it's a shame, because we've helped businesses in the past that have gone on to raise three quarters of a million, million and a half quid later down the line. And we've said, guys, if, if we could have, you know, given some money, taken a little bit of the business and then, you know, seen that all the way through, it could have been, you know, more, more commercial thing for the council to do, which is.
Potentially then fund new projects off of the back of the, the money raised and help.
Make money for the council, fund new projects, you know, reduce that need for, for, you know, for, for the, for the rates and stuff. So. But this is, I think, the, the first step towards that. But it's, it's going to allow us to fund some really cool projects. So we've got about 200,000 in the bank to help with projects. And businesses can apply for a maximum of £30,000 towards projects, and it's 50% funded. So there does have to be buy-in from the business as well. It's not just a straight, like free money. There, there does have to be buying, and that could be.
My favourite catchphrase.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that, that could be in the form of private match for the project, it could be in the form of taking on new staff as an investment. So, you know, maybe taking on new developers, stuff like that. So it could be, I mean, just to give a real world example, it could be a software company that's got a really good app that they've kind of taken to market, it's getting a little bit traction. But to really raise some serious investment later down the line, investors want to see a full blown, maybe desktop version of it as well. So they will then go and work with the external developer to help finish the product. Then they can take that, you know, to market and, and hopefully raise investment in the future. So. Yeah, it's very, it's very new, a bit niche, but it's helping some of those sectors that I think have lacked funding in, in the, in the past.
Yeah, I would definitely, sorry.
It's going really well. We've had probably 15 expressions of interest with good projects so far since last week. So we do expect it to go quite quickly. So yeah, any businesses in that sector that have got kind of oven ready projects, rather than think, oh, there's a grant, what could I do to fit it? It's kind of like, here's a project, I need funding, and we can help fund up to 50% of that. So yeah, really, really exciting that one.
And I would imagine that's a really nice entry level to maybe later looking at Innovate UK grants, where then you've got your proven MVP and you can then really scale it up and those harder to achieve grants. I definitely haven't heard anything like that for the, for that sector. So that's fantastic. I just want to clarify, I think you've been clear, but in case somebody listening has trying to make a square peg fit in a round hole. If you are a business owner, let's say e-commerce business, and you want to improve your website, they've heard the word digital, it's not quite the same thing, is it?
Yeah, websites, websites are probably one of the most popular things we get asked for, people wanting to update their website. A straight website is probably a no. However, if we've had one company come and they've got a web based portal for their service, which includes the front facing website, if that's part of it, that's fine. But this company, they've got like a payment system, a booking system, bits that they're going to bolt together to be part of that website. Whereas if it's more like a showcase e-commerce website, it's, that's really tricky to get funded. And they would really, we would struggle to, to make the case for that.
Amazing. Thank you for clarifying. So in terms of geographic eligibility, who can apply?
Yeah, so that one there, it's for Warwickshire postcodes only. So there's a handy kind of postcode checker, you can just Google, check my local authority, pop your postcode in there. It's interesting because we've got, because Warwickshire goes quite north and south. So we have some OX postcodes, some Birmingham and all surrounds, and even some Leicestershire ones as well. So double check if you are on that border. So yeah, it's, it's Warwickshire only. But we can work with businesses if they're looking to move into the area, for example. That could be, you know, around the whole inward investment idea. That's, that's something as well we can look at if they're looking to move in.
Brilliant. And are there any criteria around amount of time established? Do they need to be, for example, a limited registered company, any, any kind of minimum entry requirements?
Yeah, so because it's a, the, the money actually comes from some COVID funding, which they've somehow managed to kind of recycle into this funds. So the catch is they do have to have shown an impact of COVID, which means you have to be registered for two years. They can be pre-revenue, even if they've been registered for two years. So we, we realise there are some really good projects that are, even if you are pre-revenue, so that's fine. Livingstone Company, Soul Trader, however, it might be harder to kind of justify, but who knows? You know, we never know on the project.
Give it a try.
A CIC. Now, if, it depends really. See, we can't, we won't say no, but it just mean, we just need them to demonstrate the commercial viability of the project, really. And if that's, if it's a commercial product, then yeah, it could be.
Amazing. Thank you. Is there anything else about that fund that we need to cover off that we haven't talked about?
I think this is probably the most time critical one. So we do really need to shift the funds this financial year. So the deadline for applications is the 14th of February, so Valentine's Day. And there is a short, short expression of interest, then it'll be a phone call or, or Teams meeting with myself, just to run through the project to make sure it's kind of, it's worth having a go. Because it, it does take a while to put the applications together, you need your business plan and your forecasts and stuff. So I, I wouldn't want to kind of say, yeah, go, go ahead, fill the application form in if I didn't think it was a, it was a good project. Because I don't want them to waste their time really. So yeah, it's, yeah, time limited, second week of February is the deadline.
Amazing. And I'm guessing anybody that's interested can just get a discovery call in with you or the team. How do they, that connection, what do they need to do?
And so probably the best port of call is our shared email address, so invest@warwickshire.gov.uk. Just title it EOI Digital Grants. And pop your phone number in there and I'll give you a call back just to kind of run through things or, or schedule it in a, in a call. And yeah, we're looking to move quickly on it. So it will be a call back the same day probably, if I see the email.
Lovely. And for anyone that was thinking, EOI, that's expression of interest.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's okay. Myth busting for people who this is new language for them. So let's go back into the box. What other grants have you got?
And so the second one is probably the second most time critical. So we've got a green fund. Now, this was put together probably September time, and there's a lot green programmes that are around. There's a Coventry and Warwickshire green programme. But again, because it's European funded, it only helps B to B 50% or more. So retailers, hospitality, tourism, all of these sectors that are really feeling the pinch from energy bills and, you know, some tourism establishments. So there's a, there's a place in South Warwickshire where they've got these really cool glamping pods all around the, all around the, this kind of woodland. All of them have a hot tub, and all the hot tubs have to be on 24 hours a day. So their energy bill has gone crazy through the roof.
Yeah.
So yeah, things like that. And so we realised there was a gap for the B to C sectors. So we put together a green fund that can part fund investments that are going to lead to a reduction in carbon. So things like solar panels is the, is the biggest one really, people are looking at, could be airsoft seat pumps, insulation. Working with a farm shop near Studley actually, and they've, they've got a farm shop, but it's in a barn with a tin roof and it's freezing in there. So we're looking at installing in some kind of insulated panels, potentially some solar panels, some more efficient heating. And the payback period, when you look at what they can get back and, you know, it's crazy. Within a year sometimes with so many investments. And so yeah, that launched in October. And yeah, any, any B to C sector, any B to C business, we've got a list of the S I C codes and industries that you have to be in. Can apply for up to £2,000 towards every tonne of carbon they're going to save. So say, for example, they're going to spend £15,000 on solar panels, it will save them five tonnes of carbon. Then that could be a £10,000 grant, but they're.
I'm impressed that you could just do that in your head then.
So yeah, we've had a lot of conversations about it. So. Yeah, so it's up to a maximum of 50% of the project.
Yeah.
And yeah, it's all, it's all relative to the amount of carbon they're going to save. And so the process for that one is, again, short EOI, there's a form to fill in. There's a team at Coventry who are doing an energy audit for us, because they've already got their own green programme up and running. So we, we've said to them, guys, that we can send you some people to do an audit. They then produce a report and list up, say, everything they're considering, they take a look at their energy bill, look at the investments, what they could save, send it back to us. And then the business has the option really, it's kind of a list of, well, we could go for X, Y and Z, apply for it, get the money back. And to be honest, even without the grant, the businesses that have had the audit, when you see how quickly the payback is, it's, it's a no brainer for some of them. So yeah, that, that's there until, well, they've said the end of this financial year, but I, I think there might be a bit of leeway with that one. And again, it's, it's Warwickshire funded, so we have that flexibility for, for B to C sectors. So, so yeah, that's a really good one to, to get involved with if, you know, everybody's looking at their energy bills at the minute. So.
It's such a win-win, isn't it? Because I think a, a lot of us, when we, when we hosted COP in this country, everyone was really switched on to being more climate conscious. There were a lot of, of grants around, and it was a real nice to have, people wanted to make those positive changes. And then, as a consequence of COVID and, and the cost of living and doing business crisis, it, it went down the list a little bit in terms of priorities and, and fund allocation. But this is a win-win. Not only do you get to make that positive impact, but you get to save money on your bills as well. I really think people should explore that. That's brilliant. And incidentally, you've now made me want nothing more than to find somebody with a hot tub as soon as this podcast is finished. That sounds just bliss. So, okay, that one, that one's great. So geographically restricted?
Yeah, again, so it is again Warwickshire postcode only. However, if they're over in the Coventry area, then Coventry's programme could work as well, depending on their sector. So, I mean, any, if they're thinking of making any, any sector that's making an investment into something green and want to save carbon, then yeah, it's, if it doesn't fit our programme, we'll send it to Coventry. And the same, if they're just outside the area, we'll find the right one to send them to. So yeah, definitely, that's one to have a look at.
There are loads of really similar green initiatives up and down the country. So if you haven't already checked out some of our other episodes, there's been a huge feature around this. So if you're listening to what Sim's saying and thinking, I wonder if that exists in my region, it probably does. Either through growth hubs, growth funds, or there are a few, I, we did a podcast episode a couple of weeks ago with an EV car charger, who was a national initiative through the government. So there is loads on offer. Make sure you check it out. Because as you say, it's not, you know, this sort of programme's not going to last forever. Grab it while you can. Okay, fantastic. I think we covered off at the beginning all of the criteria. So that one should be fairly.
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah, yeah. So yeah, Warwickshire postcode has to be established business, not new. And it's match funded up to, up to a certain percentage as well. So yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's there for the taking really. So we want to, we want to spend the money. Yeah.
Have you got any more?
Yeah, so the third one, yeah, the third and final one really. So this isn't so time critical. It's, it's one that's been, we've been running this programme for, I mean, I've been at WCC for, for about five years. And it was there before I started. It's our kind of generic capital grant fund.
Okay.
And that's, that's a fairly simple fund really. And again, not European funded, so we can help any sector. We've helped game studios, we've helped the Warwickshire gin company set up their distillery, some really exciting stuff, plus all the kind of aerospace manufacturing, the traditional capital grant businesses as well. So that's a fund where you can get up to £35,000 towards capital investments at a rate of intervention rate of 40%. Now, that can be any, an investment into any item or refurb or expansion that is going to lead to a growth in jobs, a growth in revenue, that kind of stuff. So it's for existing businesses that are looking to grow, that are on that growth path, where they've got a project where they want to do it, but there's maybe a bit, cash flow's a bit tight. And by getting the grant, it's going to maybe bring it forward by a year, stimulate that growth earlier, help create the jobs quicker, stuff like that. So that's, yeah, that's, that's kind of our bread and butter really. There's always businesses interested in that. That's the hook that gets a lot of people in the discussion really. It could be office refurbs where a business is going through growth, they want to expand into a larger office, they need it refurbished. It could be, yeah, like I said, any retailers, restaurant businesses that are going through expansion, or even people like Warwickshire Gin, where they had a small distillery set up and were kind of growing their brand, growing the business. And got to a point where they just needed to take the step and make their own large distillery. So we helped them, we part funded their, their stuff there, which was really good. We didn't get any free gin though, which is a shame.
I mean, I think we need to look at the criteria to ensure that there is definitely some sampling. But anything that brings more gin to the market in my eyes is, is a win-win. And in terms of, just to kind of also add in to anybody who is thinking, that sounds like a really attractive proposition, please don't forget to explore if this is, is innovative growth or an innovative project, R and D tax credits and capital allowances, it's not something that I can advise you on, but we have experts across the region who can. So even though you're getting the grant money, you can still get some allowances that you can claim back as well. So make sure, if this is the first time you're hearing it, make sure you explore that as well. And so in terms of, sorry, in terms of claiming that same process, reach out to you or the team in the first instance?
Yeah, I'm myself or the team. This one goes, so it goes to a panel every two months. So I've got the next panel next week where I'll work with a business to get an application together. Because it's, this is our own cash and we need to be, they're quite careful about how they spend it. So we need to justify the need for the grant. So if a business comes to us and, you know, let's say they're turning over £150,000, but they've got maybe £300,000 cash in bank last year, we would say to them, look, you know, they would probably, we would probably struggle to justify the need for the grant. The panel would just say, go and pay for it yourself. If they can clearly afford it themselves, then it's not the right fund. Whereas it's, it's businesses in that sweet spot between being a viable growing business, but not sitting on those accounting assets where they could, where a 50K project would be pocket change for them. We want to help those businesses where it's really going to make a difference and accelerate that growth. So we, we qualify all that early. And, you know, we look at the accounts and stuff and related companies and parent companies. And then, yeah, we get an application together, I would then present it to a panel, we've got people from industry, people from local authority, kind of like a Dragon's Den session, where they would try and pick holes in it and, and say, what, you know, have you thought about this? Why are they doing this? And, you know, and then it will be a yes, no on the day. So then the business will go out, spend the money, claim the money back. But we don't leave them waiting ages. Once they've made their claim, we'll get the money to them within, within a week to two weeks. So we realise they need it for cash flow. We're not going to leave them waiting 60 days or anything, just to, you know, the, the normal process. So yeah, that's every two months. And what I normally say with that one is whenever you're thinking about spending money in the next kind of six, even 12 months, have that conversation early so we can plan. So it might be that we look at, you know, a, a business is looking, let's say for a new CNC machine. But actually, once we get chatting, we realise that there's other investments they want to make, perhaps it is maybe more green focused. So we'll say, well, let's use the more time critical funds now. Or maybe it might be an innovation project, which could have utilised some other funds. And then we'll save our capital grant for later on, because it's probably going to be there. So it's working out that kind of like 12 months of investments and working backwards and plotting it along, along the line.
Yeah, that makes complete sense. And I guess as well, just making themselves known, if there's a business in your local area who are about to embark on a period of growth, you want to be able to keep them in your locality, you want to be able to create local jobs, you want to support them. And, and I guess then, once you've met them and spoken to them, they're always in the back of your mind if something else comes up maybe.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah. And we try and keep that relationship going. So through the other part that we deliver, our European funded support programme, that is all focused on, it's kind of like that 12 hour, 12 hour support, one to one, but it's focused around access to finance. But then in our wider team, so sometimes we'll, we'll talk to a business about a capital grant, we'll help them get an investment, they go, they go through an expansion. But then we've also got a skills team that can help with links to schools, universities, apprenticeships, when they're going through that recruitment phase. Then also we've got a, in our inward investment team, we've got team members that can help with securing property. And especially around, around Leamington, Warwick, with some of the game studios, commercial office space is so tight and industrial as well. And you don't always know what's on the market or what's coming up, but through our relationships with the businesses, we'll think, oh, actually, this company is about to move. So there's going to be a 5,000 square foot office here. So, you know, if you're ready to move in six months, let's look at a grant. So it's all piecing together those bits of knowledge, which helps, helps really.
And I, and I guess the final thing that I want to, to ask you is around accessibility. I hear a lot of entrepreneurs who are just put off by really tricky forms, whether that's through neurodiversity or just it's not their favourite thing to do. How much help can you provide businesses with to create those plans and, and applications?
Yeah, I mean, pretty much, pretty much start to finish really. I mean, without, they have to have the ideas. But, but what I normally do is, we'll say, if, if we think, if we think a project's really good and we want to apply for something, I'll say, look, here's all the application stuff, here's, I'll write a few notes. I'll say, have a go at it first, put what you think in there, and then we'll work together face to face or, or on Zoom or whatever, to really kind of help create the narrative around making their story fit with what the grant wants to hear. Because sometimes what, we see applications for other stuff where they've completely missed the question of, of what they're, what they're being asked of them. Whereas it's frustrating because you, you know what their idea or their product is, but it's communicating it to the funders to, to hear what, to tell them the word, what they want to hear. So I think that's where, especially our role at Warwickshire, that's where we really, you know, we can really add value really, is helping tell their story in the words that they want to hear and connecting the two of them really. Because it, I think it's not useful if we just put application forms out. People interpret it in so many different ways. So it's through that one to one support and that conversation that I, I think it really, yeah, it really adds value to applications. And we get a much higher success rate as well. And we don't want people to waste their time, you know.
Brilliant. Business owners, stop copying and pasting your website content into the question boxes would be my advice. I've seen some of these forms and I think, how does that answer that question? But I know it's tempting when you're short of time. So the, the offer of support is there. Sim, is there anything we haven't covered on today's episode that you hoped we would? Or final parting tips for everyone to know where and think about?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the main, the main message really is, when you're going to spend money, talk to us, wherever you are, talk to your local representative, whoever it is. Because I quite often have conversations with businesses where you think, oh, damn it, I've just invested, you know, 30 grand in a new software system, or we've just bought this last year, can I claim? But you can't. With grants, it's never retrospective. We, yeah, you always have to get it agreed first. So that's the main thing I'd say, whenever you're spending money in the next 12 months, have a, have a conversation. And also, they're, they're the grants we've got at the minute. I mean, you know, by April, May time, it will be completely different. And as, like I said earlier, European money's finishing, UK money's coming in. So I think between now and Christmas, there's going to be so much change in the grant landscape. So we might have another conversation in three, four months and it'll be completely different. We don't know.
Yeah.
But it is exciting because we, the money is going to be more local. In theory, we can tailor it to the local economies a lot better. So yeah, watch your space. I think there'll be some really interesting projects coming out soon.
I'm definitely thinking, grab both, get this now, and then there's going to be something new and exciting in a year and you can double bubble.
Yeah, yeah, use it now. And I think a lot of it is going to be kind of R and D and innovation focused that's coming in. But who knows? It, it is too early to say at the minute. We don't know.
Amazing. Well, you have been super clear. There is lots of money and opportunity out there for Warwickshire. And if you haven't already looked into it, please do connect with the team. Sim, can you give us that email address one more time for the team?
Yeah, so for the ones we've spoken about, invest@warwickshire.gov.uk. Or my email address is simonlee@warwickshire.gov.uk, S I M E O N Lee. Or my email address is simonlee@warwickshire.gov.uk, S I M E O N Lee. But yeah, e- either of those is fine. And one of us, one of the three of us will get back in touch within 24 hours with any queries.
Lovely. I'll pop it in the bio. Sim, thank you so much for your time and your patience. Zoom has been a little monkey this afternoon. But we got there. We, we made it to the end of the episode. Thank you so, so much. And.